November 11th, 2025. Mrs. Rouge, can we do a roll call, please?
Mrs. Brancato.
Here.
Mrs. Crossen.
Present.
Mr. Gindhart.
Here.
Mr. Godikson.
Present.
Mr. Hartline.
Present.
Mrs. Lynch.
Dr. McGuire.
Yeah.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mr. Sadowski.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. The board met in executive session tonight for personnel matters. If we could remain standing after the Pledge of Allegiance to observe a moment of silence for all our veterans who have sacrificed so much for all of us, if you could also send up some good thoughts and prayers for Mrs. Lynch as she works through her recovery, we wish her well. Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
As allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under thy, indivisible, infinite and just.
Student presentations, William Tennant, Alex Colley at Middle Bucks, Melissa McDonald. Are either of those ladies here? If you could just go up to the podium, please. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alexis Colley and I thank you all again for having me back this month. So, the first marking period came to an end on November 3rd and we have officially entered into the second marking period of this school year. The celebration of bands was held on Saturday, October 18th, which brought together marching bands from Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware. The William Tennant marching band scored its highest score of the season at 80.9. In addition, the William Tennant Speech and Debate Team is having a very successful season so far with 14 new members in September. And on Saturday, November 1st, our team successfully hosted the 10th Annual William Tennant Invitational, welcoming 177 students from 15 schools across the state. On top of numerous individual awards, our team captured 4th place in speech sweepstakes and 5th in overall sweepstakes. Currently, Tennant ranks 19th in the state and team captain Caitlin Amaya is ranked 2nd in the state and 26th in the nation in impromptu. She's also ranked 3rd in the state and 67th in the nation for dramatic interpretation. While junior Aiden Edelman Cantor is ranked 3rd in the state and 49th in the nation for impromptu. And we are very proud of this team's accomplishments and look forward to an amazing season. Also, our Key Club held the biannual Broad Drive on November 5th and 6th, and for every one pint donated, three lives were saved. In addition, William Tennant held the annual Financial Aid Night on November 5th at 7:00 PM where students and parents came to learn more about the FAFSA and other financial aid options for upcoming college students. The Fall Play Bad Auditions by Bad Actors was held on November 7th and 8th. We had a great turnout and the crowd loved the show, and we are so proud of the cast and crew for all of their hard work. In sports, boys soccer finished playoffs with 10 wins, 7 losses, and 1 tie, and we are very proud of the hard work put in as well as their seniors in the last high school season. The winter sports preseason has begun with official practices starting on November 17th. In addition, Powderpuff Practices have started with the Junior Jackpot and Senior Storm both putting in much practice, and the pep rally is tomorrow, Wednesday, November 12th at 1:30, and the Powderpuff Game is to be held the same night at 7:00 PM. And all proceeds from this event will go towards Kisses for Kyle. We will also be hosting the Tennant Toss on Friday, November 14th. Teams of two can join to play cornhole and enjoy other fun activities such as concessions, face painting, arts and crafts, other sports, and music. The fee is $30 per team and all funds will go towards fundraising for the senior Disney trip. Furthermore, the William Tennant Robotics Team is holding a breakfast buffet fundraiser for Toys for Tots on Saturday, November 15th from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. An entry is $25 per person, and guests can take a photo with robots built by the William Tennant High School Robotics Team as well as donate a toy for children in need. Our music department is preparing for the winter concert held on December 11th, and the select choirs are preparing their carols for the winter performances at various senior centers and around the community. I thank you all for having me and I look forward to another meeting next month.
Thank you.
Hello and good evening. My name is Melissa McDonald and I'm a junior at William Tennant High School. I'm also a proud Level 200 student in the Dental Occupations Program at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology. I'm excited to be here tonight to share the great things happening at MBIT. This past month, Middle Bucks Institute of Technology has been named winner and finalist in the Bucks County Herald's 2025 Best of Region Contest. The winners are the Trade and Vocational School, the Evening Adult Education Programs, and the Cosmetology School. The finalists are the Nursing School, which is our Medical and Health Professions Program, and the Preschool, which is our Little Bucks in Learning. From everyone at MBIT, thank you to our incredible community, students, families, and supporters for voting us and believing in the power of career and technical education. Your support keeps ambition strong and our students future-ready. In October, students from MBIT's Cosmetology Program hosted a month-long fundraiser to support Empowering Cuts, an incredible nonprofit dedicated to providing free haircuts to individuals experiencing homelessness. Through their efforts, Salon Extreme raised $580 and collected donations of shoes and hoodies to further support Empowering Cuts' mission. This initiative showcased our students' compassion, generosity, and commitment to giving back to their community. Middle Bucks Institute of Technology is thrilled to welcome prospective students and their families to join us at our annual open house on Thursday, November 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. This event is an amazing opportunity to explore MBIT's 21 career and technical programs, meet instructors, and see firsthand what Learn by Doing looks like at MBIT. Guests can attend an informational session at 6:00 PM to learn about the program offerings, admission process, and student opportunities. We hope to see you all there. This week, 30 MBIT student leaders are heading to the Pennsylvania District 2 Skills USA Fall Leadership Conference held at the Kalahari Resort in the Poconos. This conference provides an unforgettable experience where students grow their leadership, teamwork, and problem-solving skills while connecting with peers across the region. It is an awesome way to build school spirit and celebrate what it means to be a part of Skills USA. HOSA officers and classroom student leaders participated in an inspiring leadership training at Penn HOSA in Hershey. Our students represented MBIT with pride, professionalism, and confidence, earning many compliments for their polished appearances and outstanding demeanor. Opportunities like this help our future healthcare professionals strengthen their leadership skills while connecting with peers from across the state. Students from the Automotive Technology Program and the Collision Repair Technology Program are teaming up this month to support the Auto Dealers Caring for Kids Foundation. Through their Drive Away the Cold campaign, MBIT students are raising funds to provide warm ritter coats for children in need throughout the Delaware Valley. This initiative reflects MBIT's strong spirit of community service and student-driven philanthropy, providing that even small differences in our community make a huge impact. Thank you for taking the time to stay updated on all the exciting things happening at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology. Be sure to follow us on social media with the latest news, achievements, and events at MBIT.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report, Dr. Lucabal.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. So today, the Centennial School District joined communities across the nation to express our deepest gratitude to those who defend the freedoms and values that we hold dear. Across the district, our schools pay tribute to Veterans Day with assemblies and special programs recognizing the service of our veterans, of whom there are so many in our community. It was an impressive day of acknowledgement and appreciation for the veterans in our school community and in our surrounding communities. And I can tell you that we had well over probably 200 veterans across all of our schools coming in. It was really, really nice to see. As educators, students, families, and members of the Centennial community, we stand on the foundation built by the courage of our veterans. The opportunities that we enjoy to learn freely, to speak openly, and to pursue our dreams exist because generations of courageous Americans have been willing to serve something greater than themselves. I was so impressed today with the quality of our ceremonies and the level of respect afforded by our staff in orchestrating them. And I think I also need to acknowledge just how incredible our student body was in these ceremonies. They were respectful. There was a kindergartner at McDonald who asked an incredible question, and I know it wasn't planned because it was rather spontaneous in how that evolved. And it was just adorable to watch, but really insightful. So just tremendously proud of our student body and continue to be so, and just the quality of our students. On behalf of our school district, thank you to all of the veterans in our community. Your strength, courage, and devotion to our nation inspire us and make us strive to be worthy of the freedoms that so many have fought to protect. At this time, we're going to play a brief video of today's events honoring those here in our Centennial community who have served and continue to serve in defense of our nation. And I just want to say thank you to our Director of Communications and Marketing, Christopher Sanchez-Peralta. Chris was out today. He was very active getting footage, and I touched base with him and I said, "Chris, what are the odds that we could pull something together?" And I'm really incredibly proud of what he did. So, Chris, thank you. And at this time, let's play the video.
We celebrate Veterans Day on the anniversary of the armistice that ended World War I, the armistice that began on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. The timing of this holiday is quite deliberate in terms of historical fact, but somehow it always seems quite fitting to me that this day comes deep in autumn when the colors are muted and the day seemed to invite contemplation. It is, in a way, an odd thing to honor those who died in defense of our country, in defense of us in wars far away. The imagination plays a trick. We see these soldiers in our mind as old and wise, but most of them were boys when they died, and they gave up two lives, the one they were living and the one they would have lived. When they died, they gave up their chance to be husbands and fathers and grandfathers. They gave up their chance to be revered old men. They gave up everything for our country, for us, and all we can do is remember. I will not fail thee nor forsake thee. The memory of those who gave the last full measure of devotion may on purpose to achieve lasting peace, gain strength. Let us make a vow to our dead. Let us show them by our actions that we understand what they died for, strengthened by their courage, hardened by their valour, and born with their memory. Let us continue to stand for the ideals for which they lived and died.
Thank you.
Mr. Godikson.
Thank you. Working on approval of the agenda. It was sought that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, Board One approves the November 11th, 2025 Board Agenda as per attached. Are there any corrections that are allowed by PA law?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Crossen. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As is eight now. lasting peace, gain strength. Let us make a vow to our dead. Let us show them by our actions that we understand what they died for, strengthened by their courage, hardened by their valiant horn for their memory. Let us continue to stand for the ideals for which they lived and died.
Thank you. Working on approval of the agenda. It resulted at the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.1 approves the November 11th, 2025 board agenda as per attached. Are there any corrections that are allowed by PA law?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Crossen. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As is eight nothing.
Community comments, we have one. If you could go up to the podium, you have three minutes. Please state what street you live on, not the exact address, and what township you live in. Ms. Krieger?
Karen Krieger, Villa Drive in Warminster. I just wanted to raise the fact. I just wanted to raise the fact that while I was out meeting families, several families mentioned to me an issue with their children not being able to take the buses home in the afternoon, that it was taking greater than an hour to get home. There was one that was a kindergarten child and another one that was a ninth grader. So I thought that it was important to just say that they raised the issue and, you know, hopefully you can fix whatever was the problem. And I just thought it was important to let you know. Thanks.
Mr. Godickson, you're up.
All right. We have the consent agenda. We're going to split that in half, do the first six first, and then do the other six. We can move them together. Thank you. It resulted at the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.1 approves the minutes from the October 14th, 2025 work session, regular school board meeting. 6.1B approves the minutes from the October 28th, 2025 Committee of the Home School Board Meeting. And 6.2 personnel. 6.2A resignations. 6.2B end of assignments. 6.2C authorization through employee. 6.2D leave of absence. 6.2E change of status. 6.5 mentor teachers. And 6.2G co-curricular clubs and activities. We have three more. We're going to do them, but there's none there. Excessions to policy, none. 6.4 appointments, none. 6.5 waivers, none. And 6.6 conferences and travel, none. Second, well, I'm going to give Mr. Ginhardt the candle. Any questions, concerns? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes eight, nothing, which also was the first half. Seven, Section 7 new business? And we, well, there's only one. It resulted at the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.7.1 adopts a resolution by the Board of School Directors urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to end the state budget impasse.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Crossen. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes eight, nothing. Moving on to policies. Mr. Ginhardt.
Policies. Everybody got emailed a bunch of policies for initial distribution.
Pulled.
What's that?
And I have 8.1, sorry.
8.1 pulled? 8.1, let me put my glasses on.
Actually, these are just for initial. These aren't for.
E.
We're moving on to 8.2. Do you want anything from 8.2 pulled? They're the ones who are voting on it. Okay, nothing pulled? So, moving on to 8.2, policies presented for adoption. It resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves 8.2A, Policy 208, withdrawal from school. 8.2B, Policy 317, conduct disciplinary procedures. 8.2C, Policy 317.1, educator misconduct. 8.2D, Policy 320, freedom of speech by employees. 8.2E, Policy 718, service animals in schools.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hartline. Any discussion? Questions?
One question, Mr. Ginhardt.
Yes, sir.
On E. Why in the world are miniature horses going to be added to a policy in this school district that permitted in schools? Is that a court order? Or, I mean, I never thought of a miniature horse, I don't have miniature horses in this entire school district anywhere, but I could be wrong there, but maybe somebody in Ivyland has one, but I don't know where we have any. We have to do this?
Yeah, these changes are to keep up with changes in state law.
State law says you have to let miniature horses in.
As a matter of fact, I believe that was already in there. There was just some minor wording changes.
I believe there is a list of animals that are acceptable as service animals.
And miniature.
Asked by the administration.
And that's been in there. There was just some minor language changes, but that wasn't added, no. It's just the way it is.
Miniature horses.
Have to be certified as a service animal, though, yes.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, miniature horses have it, eight zero.
Mr. Hartline.
All right. Does anybody wish to have any of the four items for the financials pulled? Seeing none, I will group them as one. It resulted that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the schedules of bills, investment cafeteria fund budget reports, general fund cash receipt summary October 2025 as per the attached. 9.2 approves the 2025 budget transfers for November as per the attached. 9.3 approves the pending bill list as per the attached. 9.4 approves the approved bill list as per the attached.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Godickson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion eight zero zero. Back to you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you. Board discussion and comments? Does anybody have anything they... Mr. Sadowski?
Thank you. Just a quick get well soon to Mrs. Lynch. Everybody knows there are a few tougher than Jane, and we're all thinking of you. But the other thing I wanted to mention was congrats to the cast, crew, and faculty whose hard work made this year's Drama Club fall play. Bad performances by bad actors, so funny, and such an entertaining show in a relatively short period of time and staying after school well into the evening for several weeks leading up to the premiere. Our Panthers always manage to put on a wonderful show every fall, and they make us proud once again. So, there's so much talent in Centennial, and I'm looking forward already to our spring musical season. Tenet will be doing a production of Mean Girls, which we're excited for. I am not sure yet about Klinger and Long College, but I, of course, will give them shout-outs in the spring, as I always do. I love that our district is so committed to the arts, and I thank our teachers again for coaching and encouraging our kids to take chances and enjoy a moment in the spotlight. So, thank you. Great show.
Anybody else? Okay. Mr. Ginhardt, district policy report.
Okay. Nothing exciting. We just met on October 22nd, discussed the policies that were put on for initial distribution. And our next meeting is November 18th. It's a virtual meeting online. Just a couple of reminders, we still have positions open on citizens' policies, so if anybody wants to get involved and have a voice in policy, email Mrs. Rouge, and we'll get you added onto the team. And just general information for people who want to know how to read our policies, go to the school district website, go to the school board section, drop down to board docs, and all of our policies are listed there. When you open them up and read them, the body of the policy is the number heading, and down at the bottom are documents that are attached. AR is their administrative regulations. Policies say what needs to get done, the administrative regulations are how it gets done, just so people know what they're looking at when they're reading policy.
Thank you. Mr. Godickson, Bucks County IU.
Thank you. First, little chat with the program and services that presented some information in regards to their key strategic priorities. The first one was, you know, considering the sustained implementation of the MTSS system, which is Multiple Tired System of Support, and also on the SWPbis, which stands for School Wide Positive Behavioral Instruction Support. They also, you know, looked a lot at the data-driven program evaluation and implementation of services. Likewise, the third component was the comprehensive planning and compliance. The IU also proudly can say they have 18 locations that they operate programs from in the county, with the newest being at the Pearl Buck Elementary School, where they just obtained 27 new classrooms. And they are just about full already at that program. Other, you know, exciting news is that, you know, they continue to have the Project Search, which is a program that they operate together with the county, where they have students 18 to 21 that rotate through various different work experiences within the county. Besides that, they had 20 instructional coaches that came in to the IU to explore the differences between learning strategies towards deeper coaching and examining ways to measure their data and their impact of the data. They also held a program, a full-day program for gifted teachers. There was participation from nine different school districts. On top of that, they have created a new program that's called the Bucks Youth Career Network System, and that is made up of organizations, you know, businesses, school, school district personnel, and they come in to share goals and of support for the youth to explore education and their experiences. And lastly, and it's being held, that was held at the Fab Lab, which is a location within Warminster. On top of that, the Fab Lab, you know, offers programs for our students when schools are closed, and that is something that's worthwhile taking advantage of by our students right here in Warminster. That is my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Crossen, PSBA.
New and advanced require school director training. According to law, newly elected and appointed school board directors are required to complete five hours of training, while reelected or reappointed school board directors must complete three hours. As an accredited statewide provider, PSBA offers new and advanced school director training designate to meet the PA state training requirements for all school directors. And with more than 125 years of expertise in school governance, PSBA provides a high-quality experience designated around your needs as a school leader. So if anybody wants to know any more information, you can find this on the PSBA website. You need five hours of training if you were just elected, and then just a little less of three if you're reappointed. That's all.
Mr. Hartline.
All right. Centennial Education Foundation, on the 25th of October, we had the puzzle competition, continues to grow year over year. It was a huge success. The winner this year, I believe, was just around 30 minutes to complete a 500-piece puzzle, team of four. They are, it's a lot more competitive than you think. They really, they really go after it, but that continues to grow year over year. There are many opportunities for sponsorship. If somebody is interested, they can go to the Educational Foundation's website, and we are always accepting sponsors, donors, individuals, foundation support, et cetera. Just reach out to us, and we will gladly accept your donation. Let's see, rolling into Legislative Council, we still don't have a budget. However, there are rumors that the House and the Senate have been called back to Harrisburg, that they may have a tentative deal, so hopefully we will see something in the short or near future at this point. We'll see. It is costing our district tens of thousands of dollars a week in lost income. There are school districts out there, such as Morrisville and Bristol, that if they don't have a budget by the first of the year, will be required to make some drastic changes. Some of them are even talking about maybe not even being able to reopen. So hopefully, hopefully this impasse will come to an end and we'll get the legislation back in. There was a piece of legislation that was signed that is germane to school districts regarding school safety and weapons on campus. Administration will be getting, I'm sure, the updates and the guidelines from PSBA regarding it, and it is a reporting process that is going to be required. So that is something that all school districts in the state are going to be required to do. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Ginhardt.
Okay, yeah. Melissa did a great job, didn't leave me with a lot. So she did mention the Student Leadership Council, HOSA Conference. Our own Haley Sigler won the 2026 Pin Design Competition, and that's, that was statewide attendees, so, nationwide attendees, sorry, nationwide attendees. So that's pretty significant. Check it out, you go to the website, it's pretty cool. It's an electronic thing, and has bells ringing electronically and stuff with the Liberty Bell, it's really neat. So congratulations to Haley for that. Application's now open for the 2026-2027 school year, so go to the, if you're interested, go to the open house, start the application process. And just a reminder that the Alumni Association is now active, so any former students want to get involved in that, go to MBIT.org. And MBIT is also hosting a fundraiser for the Skills USA competition. Also, information available on the website.
Thank you, Mark. Communications, I have none. Additional community comments, there's none. Mr. Godickson, do you want to do the schedule of?
Certainly will. Beginning with Tuesday, November 18th, the BCIU board meeting, and that is going to be held this month at the Pearl S Buck Elementary School in the Shaming School District. Friday, November 21st, elementary schools, post-grade.
Thank you, Mark. Communications, I have none. Additional community comments, there's none. Mr. Godickson, do you want to do the schedule of?
Certainly will. Beginning with Tuesday, November 18th, the BCIU Board Meeting, and that is going to be held this month at the Pearl S. Buck Elementary School in the Shaming School District. Friday, November 21st, elementary schools close grades five through, K through five, grading day. Secondary schools open grades six through 12. Monday, November 24th, 5:30 PM, MBIT Executive Council Meeting of the Whole at MBIT. Tuesday, November 25th, early dismissal, grades K through five for conferences. Secondary schools open grade six through 12. Tuesday, November 25th, Centennial School Board Meeting, Committee of the Whole, right here in the boardroom. Wednesday, November 26th, all schools closed, K through 12 conferences. Tuesday through, Thursday and Friday, November 27th and 28th, all schools closed and offices as well. Monday, December 1st, 7 PM, Centennial School Board Meeting, Reorganization Meeting, right here in the boardroom. Tuesday, December 2nd, at 5:30, MBIT Executive Council Meeting at MBIT. And Tuesday, December 9th, at 7 PM, the Centennial School Board Meeting, regular meeting, right here in the boardroom. That is all the meetings.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Adjourned.